On today's podcast, I'm honored to have Councilwoman Geraldine Champion from Henderson, North Carolina. I noticed Councilwoman Champion's social media and a lot of the things that I saw on her social media page that was going on, I really wanted to interview her, to hear about some of those things that I saw going on. And also, I wanted to know what her journey was like getting into city politics, some of the challenges, and what is her, what is her future plans for the city, working in that capacity as a councilwoman? I think you'll find the conversation between Councilwoman Champion and I to be pretty interesting, and Councilwoman Champion has a, I think she has a dynamic voice and a way of delivering the message that people will understand and enjoy hearing her talk about her journey as a city councilwoman in the city of Henderson, North Carolina. She is a heavy lifter, and I see a lot of good things coming from her work in the community of Henderson, North Carolina. So without any further talking from me, here's my interview with Councilwoman Geraldine Champion.
Hello, my name is Geraldine Champion. I am the councilwoman for the Ward One seat. I'm in my sixth month. I found it to be very exciting, somewhat difficult, and very challenging.
Six month in?
Yeah, I got sworn in in December, so we're getting ready to come into July, so it's approximately six months.
Okay. Tell me, Councilwoman, what got you interested into getting into the city politics?
Well, actually, this is my third try. I was in another area, and the voter turnout was not that great. I moved over behind what we call the old Eden Johnson, so that makes me be in Ward One. And I kind of wrestled a lot with whether or not I was going to run. As a matter of fact, me, myself, and I had a conversation, and I started off with all the reasons why I did not want to run. And then I thought about it. The people in this ward are my people. Some of us have the same struggles. We, some of us have the same difficulties in life, and I did not want somebody to run in this ward and not at least be able to reach the people. So I just, that made me make the decision to run. I felt like I was the best candidate.
Okay. Now, when you say this is your, you say your third time running?
Yes, I ran in Ward Three, which is over on the opposite side of Henderson. That'd be around the Flinny Mobile area. And the participation, the voter participation was very low. I ran against, the first time I ran, I ran against one opponent, and the second time I ran, I ran against two opponents. So that kind of sort of split the vote. The participation was a little bit higher the second time around, but people were not engaged, and that's, that's a, that's a problem with me, you know? I think it's important that anybody that have ideas either seek election or go out to support the candidates that want to represent there. When, when we tried to engage people, my first two elections, they were not, I'll say, interested. So we have four wards, and in those four wards, only the people can vote for the ward seats. But in the at-large seats, which are four as well, anybody in the city limits can vote for either one of those people, because at-large means the whole city. Ward means only the rest, the area in which you live in.
Okay, okay. So you, you actually live in that ward?
Yes, I do.
The ward that you want?
Yes. With this particular, with this particular election, we had, it was three people. It was, it was actually four people, forgive me. It was four people that were running. And what made this, this particular election so intense was, we had the opportunity to elect our first female who happened to be black as a mayor. So the numbers went up, because a lot of people have seen how the structure of Henderson has gone over the years, and they wanted to give her a chance. And I think they did a really good, I think they really did good by giving someone else a chance, because we've had, never in history here in Henderson have we ever had a female, and definitely have never had a black person to run a mayor.
Okay. So she made history on two levels then?
Yes, she did.
Okay.
The majority of the voters here are African-American, and they are Democrat.
Okay, okay.
But in a non, in a nonpartisan race, that really doesn't make that much of a difference. However, the makeup of the African-American is what carries a lot in Vance County, in Henderson.
Okay, okay. What, what are, what are some of the things that's going on in your town that you're really putting some major focus on right now?
It might, it may sound a little strange, but I, I listen, I'm one of those type of people that, since I'm new in politics, we get our packages, which consist of what the agenda is going to look like on the nights of our meetings. And when our package come in, it comes in on Thursday. So I'm a reader. I read my package on Thursday when it gets here, and I read it all the way up until Monday. That's when our council meetings are. And I'll read it Monday morning during the day, and right before I get ready to go to the meeting, I'll read it again. I want to be informed. I don't want to look like the deer head like. But one of the things that I have looked at is Blackwell Cemetery. That's one of my focuses right now. Blackwell Cemetery is the cemetery that sits on the corner of Andrews Avenue and Beckford Drive. That's the cemetery that people see coming off eighty-five. I do not like the way it looks. I, I feel like it could have looked better. And predominantly, well, actually, the only people that's really buried, buried over there, they are black people. And the conditions, we walked the cemetery ground, and I was appalled. There are so many things that needs to be done in that cemetery. The cemetery itself belongs to the county. It was abandoned, and the county got ownership of it. So I'm hoping that we can change that, because it's just in the heart of the city limits. And I want us to change it. And a cemetery is not supposed to be a gorgeous landmark, but I won't, I'm expecting to see better in that cemetery, especially coming off eighty-five. Then another project that I'm, I'm really, really focusing on is not only home ownership, but I want us to have some apartments or housing that will be income-based, because we have a high population of people that are homeless. For whatever reason, they don't have the means to do all of what they need to do. So I want to change, I want us as a council to change the dynamics of that. And we're pretty much, a lot of us are on board with that. Our council consists of eight council members and one mayor. So if, just say, for instance, if four of us vote for it, that's the majority. I mean, that's, that's going to be a split. And then the mayor has the opportunity only then to vote if there is a tie, use the tiebreaker of the, of that particular piece. So right now, I'm looking at home ownership and apartment complexes that will help those people that have low income.
Okay, okay. And now, I see you all are doing a lot for the homeless in that area, like food programs. I see in the wintertime, I noticed that you have certain alerts that come up, you know, when it's too cold, that you, it looks like you, you all go out and kind of would move them into like a shelter or something like that to, to protect them from the cold?
Yes, the only, yes, but the only downside to that is, we have a building that used, that the police department used to occupy. That's where we were using it, but since the weather changed, we're using that building that people can walk in. It's like a healthcare facility. People can come in off the streets and get their cholesterol done, their blood pressure, find out their glucose, things like that, that some people may not be able to afford. The mayor initiated this particular project, and the, and the council voted along with it, because it's, it's a piece of the puzzle that we need for healthier citizens. So when the weather gets ready to break, we're going to have to find someplace. Now, how easy that's going to be, I don't know, but we're going to have to find someplace to house the homeless population then. The city does not own a place that probably would be large enough, but we'll be looking into that as, as the months go along. The closer we get to the wintertime, I'm hoping that we'll have things in place for that particular problem that we have with people being outside in frigid weather.
So, so who, who funds those kind of programs? For the homeless, for the things that you're doing for the homeless?
The things that's being done for the homeless, when the city steps in, there was no charge. So it was, it was free and open to the public. Anybody that, that may have had homelessness issues, that building was open so that they can have a warm place to stay. And then you had people like Chick-fil-A and Bojangles, some residents that were supplying the food, so they can have something to eat.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is those, those programs are actually being funded by some of the businesses in the city, or are you getting any help from the state government?
No, we're not getting any, no, we haven't, hadn't gotten any state assistance, but our mayor would put on Facebook that she needed somebody to help house, or she needed somebody to monitor the housing of the project, or she needed food, and people would just, Henderson has, she loves the word resilient. When that, when that particular time happened, when it was cold, it's amazing who donated what, whether it was time, money, food, people would step up. But I'm hoping, I'm hoping that at some point, we can get our own facility so that we can ha- house the homeless. And I think it would be important for the city to have its own. I'm, I'm looking for a time where the city and the county can sit down together and work out some type of plan. The city is ready to work. The city is ready to sit down. But it's hard to sit down when you're sitting down by yourself, and you don't have other people that might want to partner in and sit down for whatever reason.
Well, now, my question is, if you know, now, is that something that the, say, the state government would or should or could participate in as far as helping a, a city your size and, you know, doing things for the homeless or the needy?
Well, as you know, we are a rural community. And I try my best not to be as involved with that particular piece, because I want to be effective in the things that I really want done. And don't get me wrong, the homeless part, piece of the puzzle is something I want done, but I have a focus on something else. There may be somebody else within the city that can tell you more about what fund is the state can provide, or if they will provide funding. But at the moment, this is how it's being operated, because when it comes down to the frigid cold, we want to be able to supply some type of refuge for those that are outside.
Right. Now, and like I said, that, that seems like a pretty big project, when you're saying you, you actually want to house these folks. So, and, I mean, that, that, that sounds like a lot of funds would have to come in from somewhere to do, you know, to do a project like that.
Yes, it would, and it would make it so much better if the city and the county could get on the same page. Right now, we're in a book, right now, we're in a book, and one instance may be on page thirty-five, and the other instance may be at, on page ninety-seven. But if we can come together on the same page with the same goals and focuses, and if somewhere along the line, the micromanaging control type things that are, that goes on could be put aside, and we work together for the citizens, whether they're in the county, whether they're in the city limits, if we can all sit down together and get on the same page at the same time. We could probably pull it off and do what we need to do for our citizens.
Okay, I see, yeah. Yes, I mean, you, you, you got a lot of, I mean, I see folks like Mr. Joseph Brody, he's kind of actively involved in some of those programs. I had a little chat with him a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, I guess if you get more people like that out of the community to come in and, you know, participate, and what kind of a participation are you getting with your, your council meetings? I mean, they are actually open to the public, correct?
Yes, they are, and we also have our meetings on Zoom.
What, what kind of participation are you getting on those platforms? Either coming in, coming in, or even on the Zoom sessions, people actually coming in and listening, you know, the word is getting out, or what, what do you think?
Well, in my opinion, in my opinion, I just feel like people complain after the fact. The meetings are open to the public. Anyone can come to the meetings. Anyone is open. However, the participation that you would expect to have does not always be there. Now, we had a, our McGregor Hall is a performing arts place. They go in, they have musicals, they have dance recitals, and I saw more participation with that, because they were looking for money. They requested seventy-five thousand dollars from the city, and there were more people that came to that trying to get this money. My problem with that, my problem, because I can't speak for the rest of the council members, but my problem with that is, they were not as diverse and inclusive as I felt like they should have been. And when you have dance recitals, there, there are not a lot of Hispanics, there's, there's not a lot of other cultures that's included. There's pretty much a high percentage of one group of people than it is another group. I feel like with the amount of money that they asked for, they should be open to whoever, whomever want to come and, and use that facility. But I don't think that's all, I, I don't think that's happening. So as far as your question about the meetings, there's, like I said, there are Zoom meetings. The radio station puts it on, and sometimes they have town talk on there where people can call in and voice their concerns, and I've listened to that on several occasions, and I haven't heard a lot of chorus sponsors there. And the open door, there's not a lot of people showing up for those meetings. So when we had, when we had to work with the budget and the taxes were raised, I heard people complain about taxes being raised. They had the opportunity to come in, sign up, voice their concerns, and they did not. As I tried to explain to a couple of them, we are living in 2024. A lot of people want different things to happen in Henderson, and we cannot live on a nineteen-seventy or nineteen-eighty tax. We can't, we can't live in nineteen-seventies and seventies and eighties where the taxes were lower and still get things done. So I tried to encourage people that when they have concerns, come to the meeting. We have a meeting on the second Monday of every month. Every month. And unless it's something that somebody wants to, a lot of times, unless it's something they want to complain about, they don't come. They don't come at the beginning when you can voice your, your concerns about how things are operating, but once things are done, then maybe then some of them may show up.
So how do you think you can better get that word out to the folks that may not even know that, you know, that the, you know, they can come to those sessions? Or do you think the word is already out there? I mean, churches getting involved, you know, putting those words out on Sundays, or, I don't know, flyers at work, the Walmart, or, I mean, what, what do you think?
Well, the meetings, the meetings have not changed. The meetings have been on the second Monday for the last roughly ten years, ten plus years. So it's not like we're doing a new thing as far as the meetings are concerned. They know, a lot of them do know, and a lot of them that may not know, may not care for that. So the website itself will let you know what days the meetings are held. So it's, 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 it's pretty much the ambition that's missing. You know, if, if you are concerned about what's going on in your city, then you make it known, you show up to these meetings, come to the meetings, voice your concern. It may not change, it may not change the outcome, but at least you had the opportunity to check, to, to voice your concerns. And then on the other side of it, it may make us look at something different that we never thought of, and if you come and voice your concerns, we may have a, a reason to sit there and think about how we can do something different. But until they start coming to, until people start being more active, more involved, and more concerned about their city, before the fact, after the fact usually don't, that does not work, because we've already voted on whatever issue it is that we had to vote on at that particular time.
Now, you, you've been there, you've been in Henderson all your life, correct?
Yes, I have.
Now, you know everyone in town, I'm quite sure.
If I don't, it's so close to it.
Now, and, and so are you seeing the prominent figures coming to those meetings? Or, I mean, like I said, you there, are you, are you seeing folks come out that, I won't say maybe should be there, or that maybe if they were there, they could help spread that word? So what are you seeing?
Mainly what I see at the meetings are staff members, staff people that belong to the city, that are employees of the city. The majority of the people that are in the city council meetings are people that are tied into the city itself, like directors, people that want to find out if certain things are being passed, that they've requested. Normally, when we have other people there, it's normally, from my, from my view, are people that are requesting certain, certain things. They're not, they're not so much speaking up, they have requested, or they're looking for a certain thing to happen. Like I said, since June, the largest, the two largest turnout that I've seen was when we got sworn in, and when McGregor Hall wanted funding from the city. There were not a lot of people, probably five people at the most that came in about taxes. The other, the other people that, that are actually there are employees of the city.
Now, look, who, who your soldiers out there? I know you got listed soldiers, your soldiers.
My soldiers doing what?
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you are a prominent figure, right? People know you. You, I know your family. I know, I know you all are big in the church, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, so, and I, I know they say there's a what, separation of, you know, you don't want to mix church and, and politics and all of that, but hey, look, they're part of the community, right?
Well, you know, I don't, I don't fully agree with that statement, because, you know, for years, as African-Americans, a lot of stuff that we had, or that we did that pertained to politics and stuff, and right in the church. But people tend to take that particular state, saying about the separation of church and state, probably need to do a little bit more on the educational line, because my interpretation of what they're talking about, the separation of church and state, is that the, the state cannot come in and tell the church how to run its business. Yeah, I may be wrong, but a lot of us need to research that particular piece. Because like I said, for years, we've talked about politics, even up, even to the point where we became a nonprofit, and we received our nonprofit stat, um, status. A lot of us have talked about politics in the church. The thing is, you don't just stand in your pulpit and say, I want you to vote for this person, but you can say, I need you to go out and vote, please go out and vote. But people need to research that matter, or, or contact those people that they can trust in their state, to find out exactly what the meaning of that particular phrase is. As far as my troops, I'm pretty much, that's my truth. We go to a lot of things, and I'm sure you've seen a lot of pictures with me on it and some of the other council members, because we are in the community. That's one thing that nobody in this community can say. We don't never see the city council members until they get ready to, until they want us to vote for them. We're everywhere. We're, we're attending pretty much everything, because we want to be visible, we want to be where if they need to contact us, they can. So we, we're out there.
I see your pictures.
We're going to functions, we're going to functions, we're going to meetings, we're going to shake hands. We pop up in places that some people don't expect us to pop at that. We're there. We want them to know that we represent them, so we're out there with them.
And I, and I see that on your, on your social media, and that's why, you know, have a little bit difficult not quite understanding why the participation at those council meetings that are open to the public, there are not more people coming to, you know, to There are not more people coming to, you know, to voice their opinions and help get the word out to. Maybe push some of those programs and, you know, get them going harder and working more. You know, because you all are so, so involved in what I I see on the, on your social media.
I went to a function um. And I I don't think a whole lot of them recognized who I was. I went, I didn't even have my name tag on. And I was listening to this particular organization that was telling the people that were sitting there. That they need to um get more involved in the community and. Um, one, one young lady made the statement, well, where's the mayor? She should have been here. So it was myself and one other council member that was there. And we were sitting there and I I let them, I let them, you know, get it off their chest. And then I stood up and I said. I am a council member. I represent Ward One.
You one of the mayor's generals? Although you and. Well, you said no?
You say I'm not one of the males.
I say you are one of the mayor's generals. Right, she can't be everywhere, but but go ahead with, go ahead with your story, go ahead with your story.
And I explained to the lady that we only have one mayor, but we have council members. That are showing up in places to represent the city and to find out what's going on in the city.
That's right.
And as I explained to the lady, um. I'm here and there's one other council member here with me. Our mayor had a previous engagement. This was before you all notified anybody that you were going to have anything here. I said, but as we speak, I said, I don't remember seeing any of you as city council members. And I had one lady to say, um, we didn't know we could come to it.
See, that's what, that, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't think that people know, but go ahead.
I said, but do you pay taxes? She said, well, yeah. I said, any meeting that pertains to your taxpayer money, you can go to it. I said, we have meetings on the second Tuesday of every month. But we didn't know, did you bother to find out? If we can't get to you to let you know that we're getting ready to have a meeting, because we talk to people all the time. And sometimes it do come out, we're having a meeting um on this particular day, would would love to see you there. I said, but have you even looked at the website? Have you looked at the city website? And everybody went mute. Because they found, they found themselves in a position where they were talking about something they knew nothing about. Have not attended a city council meeting or anything. So I encouraged them, if you have a concern, come to the city council meeting and sign up. And the city manager will get back with you. Because we, we typically, when they have questions, we don't ask them questions. That's the way it's set up. The city manager let us know what's going on. We're sitting there, but we can't respond to them. Because responding to them can cause a confrontation, and that's not, that's not what we are going to do. So if we have a concern about what they say, we talk to the city manager or the city manager talks to us, and then he gets back in contact with them. But when I talked to these people, it was in January and I still haven't seen. City is going to do some great things. We got people on board that's going to embrace the great things and of course, we're going to have the naysayers. But I'm looking for us to do some great things in this city. We cannot continue to function like we did back when, so we're going to do some great things.
What, tell me about um the, I think um you had said something about a, a carts, carts program? Or do you want to talk about that? Well, what, tell me, but tell me, what is carts and how many people do you think know about carts?
Everybody, everybody in Henderson and Warrens and and. The Vance, Grahamble, Warren and Franklin County knows about carts.
Van, you said Vance, Warren and Franklin?
Vance, Warren, Franklin and Grahamble County knows about carts. Carts is a public transportation service. That pick up people to go to work. Pick up people to go to doctor's appointments, the grocery store. The dialysis, school. That's how, that's how famous carts happen to be. That's how, how famous they are.
Now, is that a free service? Is that a free service?
No, it's not a free service. Um, they do get some funding. But if the average person that does not fall under the guidelines to receive that funding. They can go from anywhere in Henderson to anywhere in Henderson for four dollars. They can go from anywhere in Henderson to Vance, it's a Warren, Grahamble and Franklin County for five dollars. That's one way. And when I said four dollars in Henderson, that's one way. When I first started, I worked at carts, I worked at carts for five years. I used to drive the shuttle van. Which is the issue, which is the topic of conversation right about now because they're getting ready to shut shuttle off. Before COVID, before COVID, carts had a high rate of participation. People were riding to Walmart, they were riding to Roses. Going to doctor's office, some of them were getting dropped off at thirty shops and they had to get off there to go to work. Um, and it didn't cost but one dollar getting on. But since COVID came in, just like with any other business or entity. When COVID came in, the ridership went down. The ridership went down tremendously. I stopped driving for carts about, I mean, I stopped driving the shuttle about two years ago. I no longer work with them anymore, but I started riding, driving for carts about. I stopped driving for carts last year, but I stopped driving the shuttle about two years ago. I started doing. Door to door transportation where I would pick people up at their door and drop them off wherever they had to go. The shuttle has about thirty some stops. And they are placed in different areas, so you can get on on Andrews Avenue and go to Walmart for dollars. When the shuttle comes back around again, you can get on at Walmart and get back off wherever you need to get back off as long as the shuttle stop is there.
On that route.
And it didn't cost but one dollar to ride one way and one dollar to ride the other way. But COVID messed up a lot of that. The ridership went down. And the cost it went down the way it did, it has declined, that declined back when COVID really came. And we couldn't put so many people on the van. But there is a funding issue there.
There's a funding issue, so that's funded by the, by the city. Carts is.
Is it funded by the city?
Yeah, you say there's a funding issue, is funded through the city or is that through the?
No, no, um, cart, I mean, they were funded by um places like social services or whatever. But the problem comes in. Um, they wanted, they wanted money from the county and they wanted money from the city. My, my, my thing was, your ridership went down. And funding a pro- a program that has, is not, not surviving. Would not be for the betterment of everybody. Like I said, it only costs a dollar to ride the shuttle from one place and get back on and ride it to another place. So each time you got on and off that van, you paid a dollar. There's some issues going on that the shuttle is going to close at the end of the month. It's going to bother some people, but I don't think it's going to have a great, a greater impact on the majority, just a few people.
Who's riding it? Mainly the elderly or?
It, everybody. Everybody was riding it, riding up until COVID came, took over. But everybody, a lot of people, a whole lot of those, everybody was, that was riding, have stopped riding. So it, it, it's a hard decision because we're in a rural community to say we're going to lose. A mode of transportation. But the shuttle only had one van running. When I first started, there was two vans running in the morning, two vans running in the afternoon. The vans that ran in the morning ran from seven. The one van ran from seven to three and the other one ran from seven to about four. It's been a while. Then when, when, no, I'm sorry, it was from seven to one and seven to one thirty. Then the second van, the second group of people, two people that went on, they got on at one and ran into seven and seven thirty. So because the ridership was low, they changed it from two va- from four vans. Down to two vans. And the numbers, the numbers never picked up. So they went from two vans to one van. That's how drastically it changed. That's how bad the change was, from four to two, from two to one. So the numbers, the numbers never got high again once the restrictions were lifted. And people weren't just not riding like they used to ride. But it was a good service while, while it lasted. I just feel like in my opinion, there should, there were some other things that probably should have taken place. That did not. Um, I think there should be a study going on to see if it's even doable. You know, if it's worth continuing it. But I just, I hate that, I hate that the citizens are going to lose it because. All the people that were riding were all, they were in the inner city. But carts is going to continue to operate. They're still going to take people to the dialysis. But the shuttle piece is the piece that they're losing, not the whole transportation piece.
So, so, so you said when they take people to dialysis, what do they have to do? Call? I mean, you call a central location and they'll just come out and pick you up? Kind of like Uber service, I mean?
No, 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 no.
I mean, how does that work?
Okay, so the people that paid for the ride. Most dialysis patients were going on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays or Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays. So they had, they had standing appointments. So it's not like they had to call. Their regular days was those days, either Monday, Wednesday and Friday or Tuesday, Thursdays and Saturdays. So since they had standing appointments and stand, and standing times about their appointments, the times they had to be there. It didn't change unless something happened and they had to get them in a little bit earlier. But all they had to do was get on the list, whether the Department of Social Services paid it. The senior citizens paid it, or the patient themselves paid it. So they were going to dialysis when their appointments were over, they were being picked up and transported back home.
Okay, I got it, I got it. Well, look.
And the same thing pretty much happened with work and school.
When you say school, wh- what do you mean, like the community college or?
Yes, Vance Grahamble Community College.
Okay, so people living in the, I mean, that's a pretty good hump out from uh Henderson out to that, that college, you know, so.
It's not far. It's not that far. It's not that far.
It's, it's too far to walk, but what I'm saying is. If they lose that service.
Even in the cold, it's too far to walk.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Well, see, they were, they were not picking up this inner city. They were, they might pick up. Five people that were going to Vance Grahamble, one, two of them might be in the county. Or two of them might be in the city, they, they were picking up random people, so it was pretty much more than one person going to Vance Grahamble. And then when they picked them up going home, they would pick up a group of people and take them home. I want the county. And the city. To sit down and if there are any differences, hash them out. Let's move forward for the betterment of the citizens of Vance and Vance County in Henderson. Because it's been a little side joke about Henderson um being in the county, but anyway. However they want to look at it, I want us to sit down at a table. And agree to disagree without being disagreeable. And come to a genuine consensus about what our, what our place we call home needs. We need to be able to come together as a group. And move this city in a direction forward. That a lot of citizens may have never thought they would ever see. I want us to collaborate, I want us to build, I want us to pick each other up. I want to, we, we probably will never be like a family, but I want us to act like one. I want us to act like a family where we got, we have the. People that we supposed to speak for to be the top priority. I want us to gather together and get some things done that this city needs. The other thing is. I do want people to start coming to the meeting. Don't leave us, don't throw us out there and say, we want you to represent us. If you don't tell us what you want. How do we know what you want? How do we know how you feel? We may not always agree on the same thing, but at least let us know. Don't wait till election time come, which is another thing I want to touch base with a little bit with the upcoming election. I want our people to get out to vote. It's important. But don't wait until election time come and then say we haven't done anything. Because you don't see the progress that you want to see. I want them to let us know, we have phone numbers listed, we have emails listed. You can go, they can go on the website and find our phone numbers, they can go on the website to find the email addresses. They can catch us at the city, we're in the city, we're at different functions. Let us know what, what you want. Because if we don't know what you want and we start doing things and that's not what you want, that's going to be a problem. We can't address the iss- the issues and needs of people if we don't know what their issues and needs are.
Now, do you have a plan on getting those? Kind of bringing those people together to get those things done that you want, you know, to do, like everybody to come together, I mean. Do you have a plan yet?
I've thought about something, but it, I'm looking at the, I, I thought about something. But I think it's going to probably take. Almost an act of Congress to get us all at the table together, because like I said. When people, when people are, are. Not willing, we consider the table. Or they consider the table. If we don't want to receive what they got to say, we may not show up. If we want, they don't want to receive what we got to say. They may not show up. I don't know how it, how it has to be done. All I know it needs to be done.
You actually see.
I don't know.
You actually see and feel resistance from, you know, people. People in position. So they, so I mean, so these people are just coming to work to just get a check, I guess.
Or, or prestige.
I mean, you, you seem like a fighter to me, and that's one of the reasons. I mean, you, you seem like a fighter to me, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to, to talk to you. Because like I said, I, I've been knowing you a long time and I, I see your social media and I see you guys out there, when I say guys, that includes, you know, guys and ladies. See you all out there working, doing a lot of, uh, I call it heavy lifting in the community. This boggles my mind that people won't come together and, you know, and, and, and work for the betterment of the, uh, the community, because everybody benefits in the end, you have open meetings and uh, I mean, I guess you sit there, you see all of the, the open seats or open space and people complaining and I mean, wow, and like I said, I know you, again, I know you've been in Henderson a long time and you, you know, you, all of the churches and the church members and the pastors and the teachers and uh, I mean, the people that you see that's working in the, the grocery stores and I mean, y- and they just don't, nobody showing up.
No.
It's, it's amazing.
You know what, you know what really, you know what really boggles my mind though?
What's that?
Everybody wants change, but don't nobody want to change.
Right.
And that, that may sound twisted, but it, it's, it's the truth. You won't change, but you don't want to change. In my opinion, for so many years, people have showed up to city council meetings. I was going to city council meetings before I even, maybe not in the last year or two, but I had been going to city council meetings just so I can go, so I can find out what's going on, in other words, I was concerned, but I was also nosy, yeah, I'm, I'm throwing it out there too, I was concerned, but I was also nosy, I wanted to know what was going on. So I would show up randomly at meetings, just to say I went to one, just to find out what was going on, and just to be nosy. But when it comes down to realization, a lot of times, I've noticed that in the past, you know, you need to critique everything that you do. People will come to meetings requesting certain things, and a lot of times they may have, may have gotten them. And they were so used to not coming that a lot of times people might not show up. They might say, I want this, that, and it, and it's voted across the board that they would get it done. I don't know how that part work, I'm just using that example.
Right.
But if you really want something, you need to work for it, even if it's no more than trying to get, um, a sidewalk put in your neighborhood. You can't say I want a sidewalk in my, in my neighborhood, you talk to a couple of people and when it's time to get that sidewalk or get the nod for the sidewalk, you need to be right there when they make the decision.
That's right, that's right.
But people tend not to want to work for the things that they really, really want. They want somebody else to speak up for them.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me tell you a couple of things that I've done that you probably don't know.
Okay.
Okay, so my name is, my name is on the plaque at the ACOG Recreation Center, when they bu- built that brand new center, I was sitting on the board with them. My name is on that plaque, and that was, that was something I wanted to throw out there. I've also, I also served on the Human Relations Board. I served with Legal Aid of North Carolina on the Board of Directors with, with lawyers, um, client counsel. I did public, public relations at Vance Grammar Community College. I've been in the community forever, okay? I've done things forever. One of my proudest moments was serving on the, um, Client Counsel with Legal Aid of North Carolina and being serving on the board because I, it, it made me know I could speak up for people that were not there and that would not speak up for themselves, and I've been doing that particular piece for years. People come to me with concerns and I would go to the city council meeting and ask them to meet me there, and I'm the only one speaking up for them, cause they didn't even show up.
Wouldn't even show up.
I've been doing that particular thing for years.
I said, wow, yes, it wouldn't, they wouldn't even show up after all of that, wow.
No, no. So I've been doing this particular thing for years, I am a servant of the people. Whether I sit in a position and it's just like I told them during the time that I was trying to get in this seat. Whether I'm in this seat or on the other side of this seat, I'm not gonna stop serving my community. Because I believe in my community. And I just, I just hope people would stop looking at positions so much and realize what they are doing is not so much for you, it's for somebody else.
Right, right.
And that's why I have done the things that I have been doing in this community. Because I want to be that person, I want to be that spokesperson for somebody that's not gonna open their mouth. So whether it's on the council or as a private citizen, it doesn't stop. I wish we could get our young people engaged, because you know what? I'm sixty-two years old.
Right.
I know somebody close to my age or somebody that's older than me, but we have to get it somehow or the other, I mean, they have the young Democrats. But we got to get our younger people engaged, because I don't know if you remember Margaret Ellis. Margaret Ellis was one of those pioneers. You're talking about grassroots. During the election, she was out knocking on doors, they were making phone calls. A lot of that stuff that, that we used to do where Dr. Green was busting people to go vote and all that stuff, they don't do those things anymore. And that's why it's so hard to get people elected, that really means the people some good. That's why we have so many, that's why we have so many lopsided elections where those people are running for um, popularity, and then I, and I, and I made that statement. I got enough people to know me, I don't need to get nobody else to know me so I can be popular. I know enough people to make me popular without sitting in a seat.
Right, right.
But those grassroots organizations that were out singing those, um, those songs of yesteryear, those Negro anthems and all that stuff and knocking on doors and picking people up and taking them to the Pope, that does not exist like it did before. But Margaret Ellis was one of the one, I have been in politics, not in a seat, but I've been in politics, since I cast my first vote. The following year, the following election, I was at the polls asking people to vote for certain candidates. Knocking on doors, making phone calls. I'm sixty-two years old and it seem like I'm still in the same boat. Doing the same thing, but just from a different platform.
Okay.
What we, what we need is a group of younger people. We need the younger people to get engaged, take political science classes, talk to the older people that can tell them how to do certain things, we need them to be more like us, but in a younger way. They can get on social media and it's nothing, if they can get on the computer and it's nothing that they can't find, and it'd take us two years to find.
That's right, that's right.
We have to get our younger people engaged.
Yeah.
Cause we coming, we are upon an election year this year. That we gonna have to fight like it's our last fight.
I'm telling you.
In North Carolina alone, we got people. We have a man that's running for the governor of this state that is African-American. That's saying that women do not have a right to do what they want to do with their body.
That's right.
And telling people to keep their skirts down.
Right. I've seen the commercials, but a lot of people don't watch TV anymore, but go ahead, you're right.
So I, so when I get ready to, when I see it, when I go back to my timeline, I find, I make sure I put it on social media, cause if you don't see it on TV, I'll make sure you see it on this computer.
Right, that's right.
As, as long as we have those people with that, that mentality and that other one that said he can stand in the middle of Times Square and shoot somebody and people see a vote for him.
That's right.
And, and who is, who was a felon.
That's right.
And our people don't get better engaged in the voting process. We're gonna be forever left behind.
That's true.
I never seen, and I'm going back to this election, I was just being myself. The engagement of the people that came to vote, there were people that were coming out to vote for city, um, for city, for the city, for elected officials in the city that could not vote. It was just as many coming out that could not vote as it was that could. These people were coming out to counties, when we have city election, the county can't vote for us.
Okay.
But it was just as many coming up there trying to vote to find out they couldn't.
Wow.
If we can keep our people engaged with our local elections, which make, which has the biggest impact on us, by the way. And our national and federal ele- and our federal elections, we wouldn't have to worry about a whole lot of this stuff that we have to worry about right now.
That's true. Yeah.
But our parents are not teaching their children either how important it is to vote.
That's right. Yeah.
They're not teaching them how many people have died or had to take literacy tests in order to even be able to vote. They don't teach that in school.
No.
There's no way else to teach it, but at church or at home.
That's right.
And we're not doing it.
That's right.
I'm tired of, I ain't ranting no more.
Well, let me ask you this.
Don't ask me no question, I gotta rant.
Few more minutes, that, that, uh, the young dem- Democrats you were talking about, right? Now, w- why not get them involved in the, um, coming out to some of those meetings? You know, s- maybe that'll spark some interest, I mean, is that?
In the Democratic Party?
Yeah, so, I mean.
You know, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, eh, you know what, and I mean, it's sad, but it's true. With our, with, with our children, you have to keep, get them engaged and keep them engaged. You have to keep them engaged outside of election year. You keep them engaged during the election, but after, after the election year is over, you still have to engage them because they start finding other things to do. So what was important to them this year may not be important to them next year.
Right, well, that's why I was saying, what I was saying, mm-hmm, go ahead.
The process of trying to get the young Democrats on, on board, I mean, I've seen, um, the NAACP trying to get young people on board. But what happens is, something else comes along and I'm, our children are, are unique. When they're involved, they're involved, if they ever leave it, you can just about forget getting them back. It's sad, but it's true. You have to keep them engaged almost every time you do something, and you have to continue to do that. But a lot of times, we don't know how to keep them engaged, if that makes sense.
It makes sense to me.
Um, I had, my granddaughter was like, one day I used to be at the polls, when I used to be at the polls of town, I had, would have. At that time, I didn't have, but what, five grandchildren. But when I was up there at the polls, I had them up there doing homework. When they finished their homework, they were passing out stuff. My granddaughter just told me last night, my grandma used to have us go on with her places, she don't even ask no more, I said, well, Dexter, you you were staying, you had this going on, grandma, you still can ask. So that makes me, makes me realize that she did not forget. She did not forget how I tried to have her, I had the two oldest ones. I, I, I want, always wanted to meet, um, Dr. William Barber, always wanted to meet him. When he came to Warren County one year, and I took my oldest grandson and my oldest granddaughter. I had a nerve to have an attitude because my grandda- my oldest granddaughter had met Dr. Barber before I did. He got out the car, he saw her standing on the sidewalk, he grabbed her hand and they walked up together for him to get ready to make his speech. I said, and I've been trying to get, I've been trying to know this man for thirty years. He never, he never thought I was a child, but he never thought about Grandma, but here she is, and it made an impact on him.
Right.
But it takes, sometimes it takes those little things to get our children engaged. But to keep them engaged, you got to keep on pushing and pushing and pushing.
Yeah.
Some of them, you know, some of them will want to learn what politics is all about, and some will be like, I ain't even interested in that, I don't even want to vote.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah. When's your next meeting coming up?
Our next meeting is the second Tuesday next month.
Second Tuesday next month. I'm gonna make a suggestion.
At six o'clock.
In your neighborhood, right? You, you got, you got some young person there in your neighborhood that you can take with you to that meeting, that be willing to go? Just one or two, do you?
In my neighborhood.
Yeah.
I ain't, you know what, I feel like I'm in a retirement village, cause I ain't seen no school bus over here.
Is that right?
Probably had to look this thing.
Yeah.
I haven't seen no, no school bus, bus over here behind Eden Drive.
Take one, you go to church every Sunday still, every other Sunday or whatever, whatever it is now. Take one of your young church members with you. I mean, just one or two, if you can, just to let them see what's going on. See if that maybe sparks some interest.
I tried it.
Yeah, I mean, really, I mean, you gotta start somewhere, and I know you do a lot of, lot of work, uh, councilwoman, I know you're doing a lot of work around, I, I can see. But, uh, I mean, really, just take one and, or two or, see what happens. But, but tell me this, I'm not gonna hold you any, any longer, tell me this. What, what is, what is your call to action? Is your last statement, if you have a call to action to the community of, uh, Henderson Vance County? Or do you have a call to action at this point you wanna bring up?
I don't, I really don't. Um, but I will say this. I, I will end like this. When my four years end, when my four years end, if I do not see some changes, then I'm gonna pass the baton over to somebody else. I do not think that I should stay in a seat forever if there's not a, some type of positive change coming. I want to see, I want to, I want to plow the garden, I want to plow the yard. I want to plant the seeds. And I wanna watch it grow.
Right.
If I, if I plow the yard and plant the seed and nothing grows, I want to step out of the way for somebody else to can, continue a different process of growth.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm willing to work with that person and give them a little bit of, a little bit of everything that I can give them to try to make things better for our citizens. So if it means I do one turn, two turns, then I'm good. Either way, I'm good, if I don't, if I run again and they say they don't want me, I'm good, I support that next person. But I want to see some growth in Henderson. I want a positive change, I want to see some difference, I want to be on a, on the council and we've made a difference. That's what's important to me, a positive difference for this community.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, well, I'm gonna say this to you again, I wanna thank you for coming on the podcast with me today. And I seen, like I said, I just seen you guys doing such good work. And I just want to give you some flowers by inviting you to come on and talk to me. And, um, somebody, somebody's watching you, some young person, whether you know it or not, is watching you, okay? That's why I say grab, grab one or two and just invite them, hey, look, what are you doing? And just invite them, hey, look, what are you doing next, you know, some young person, like you say, you need to spark some interest somewhere. What, you know, I, I, you know, you seeing them, you, you know, you know them, they have respect for you, you see them, I mean, it's just like me, I, I, I take these young boys fishing, right? And I've been taking some fishing since they were, uh, couldn't even hold a fishing pole, and right now, they outfish me. I mean, we go fishing and they be catching fish, I, I ain't catching fish, but they, they catching big fish, and.
Oh, you catching fish?
Well, I'm catching.
You catching fish, you, you caught, you caught their attention, that was your fish.
That's what I'm saying, and that's the way it starts, so, like I said, if some young person is watching you. That, that's seen you out there in the community working, they know what you do. But they don't, I mean, they know you, uh, the councilwoman, but they don't know what, what it's like for you when you doing your work. Take them with you to one of those meetings and see what, see what kind of interest it may spark in them, you, you, you don't know, you never know.
Right.
Uh, Mr. Joe Mount, if you ever listen to Joe Madison, you, uh, passed here this year, you, uh, comes on Urban View every morning, XM Radio. But, you know, he, uh, uh, I mean, just a great man, but anyway, he, like you say, you want to, um, you were saying that. You wanted to, uh, pass, pass it on to the next person? Well, like he said, look, don't, don't pass it on, just light somebody else's torch, you keep your torch burning. But you take your torch and you light somebody else's torch. And the more torches you light up, the brighter things are gonna get.
Right.
And there you have it, I think that was a very interesting and informative interview with Councilwoman Champion. Hey, stand behind this woman here. I believe she's very serious about what she's saying. She's ready to work, looks like she's always been ready to work and involved in what has been going on. In the Henderson Vance County community. So, get out and support her, attend those meetings. It doesn't take but a few to get involved. And before you know it, you got a lot going on, there's power in numbers. And like I was saying with Councilwoman Champion. Don't give your torch up, just light someone else's torch, the more torches you light, the brighter that light gets. The more information flows, so, stand behind her and support her. I think you have a great leader in Councilwoman Champion. Thanks for listening, my name is Chester, you can call me Ed. I'm the host and the creator of the Voices Podcast, see you next time, peace.